Actually, you can. All right, we are now live on YouTube with this graphic. If you'd like to let folks, let folks in and then we can let them know that we're waiting for.
Go for it. Yeah, Christina, if you want to let them in. So council join us. Tony, we're waiting on quorum. So I'm assuming we cannot even start member comments till we have quorum. Am I right?
One's one's on the way.
We have quorum.
Perfect. Fantastic. Alrighty, Sean, if you want to switch from the graphic, we can start. Welcome everyone to our budget work session. This is going to be led by our fantastic treasurer, Bob Petrie, and our finance crew. So we would start with member comments, and I know we have a member who's registered for member comments. Historically, this is has to be related to finance, but if you have any other member comments, I'll still let you go ahead and make the comment. But the answers will probably be given to you if we have any at a later date. So Christina, if you want to let. I think we have.
To approve the agenda.
Sorry. Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Glenn, I'm assuming you're an I, hearing your objection, moving on. Alright. Christina, you've got Julie unmuted.
To unmute Julie.
Perfect, Julie. Can you start with your name and address, please, and take your three minutes? Please tell us how we can help you.
Absolutely. My name's Julie Darty. I live at 11823 Breton Court in Reston, number 22 Hunters Woods Village condominium association. And I know you guys are talking about the budget tonight, and on behalf of our association, I am the president. I wanted to just advocate for our repurposing of our ball field. That I've been working that for, I'm in my seventh year of working that and had great support from Larry, Karen Anton, folks like that. And I just wanted to put a plug in for that for the budget because we are anxiously awaiting. So not quite sure how all this works, but I just wanted to put in our plug for it and invite people over to see our place. It's gorgeous and the ball field's going to be an important neighborhood element. So that's it.
Thank you so much. Fantastic. And if we have any other member comments, please raise your hand or send a message on chat to Christina or myself. If we have none, then we can move on to, this will be led by Bob. Christina, do you see any? I don't see anyone.
I do not see hands. No.
Perfect. Bob, this is your show.
Okay. I've got to start out by sharing an initial slide since the agenda only showed me speaking and you don't want to hear from me all evening. So what we're going to do is do a three-part present, three presentations. First of all, we're going to begin by talking about budgeting basics, and that's going to be done by Dave Kerr of the fiscal committee. Next, our acting CEO, Larry Butler, is going to talk about initial considerations that staff have formulated for the upcoming budget. And then finally, I'm going to deal with next steps in the budget process, how we get from June 8th to November 17th, when we will approve the budget for 2023. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen and allow Dave to do his presentation.
Okay, thanks, Bob. I think Mike is going to do the slideshow for me. I appreciate that, Mike. I know that Scott Seavers wanted to be here tonight. But there'll be many budget meetings. There's only one graduation from kindergarten. So he had a priority that could not be overridden. So you got me instead. So yeah, just so you know, this is going to be very high level. We're talking about basics. This is my revenue minus expense minus capital plus or minus cash equals zero. You know, we're a nonprofit. Okay. So Mike, the next slide, please. So I'm going to take you through each of these categories. And first, you know, it's just really an overview. Okay, we do a two-year budget every year, every other year. Thank you. We have, we have, we have never relied on the second year budget to be formalized. Every year we work on the budget, even though we do a two, a biennial budget. It's something that little hard to project out two years accurately, and so we really wind up doing this exercise on an annual basis. And just some real fundamentals. Okay. And these aren't RA fundamentals. These are just very generic. You know, you agree on goals. You know, confirm your reserve positions, understand the current situation, meaning a forecast. You know, you really, you kind of roll your budget up to get where you think you need to be. You know, you try to be a little conservative. You think about long-term effects. And you know, probably two of the main things to remember when you go through this process is the budget's going to change. Okay, don't worry about it. Okay, that's what happens with budgets. They change over time, over this whole five-month period, they're going to change. And probably the most important thing, keep everyone in the loop. That's, there's, there's some key players in this. And just make sure that you keep everyone in the loop and it goes a lot smoother. Mike. So the, so to cover each of these categories, revenue, to give you an idea of the, of the scope, about 80% of our revenues assessments. Pretty fixed number. Okay, there's about 5% that's related to things like late fees, financing fees, interest and dividends. And then there's 15% that's all of the programs and activities that are run by the organization for all the members and non-members every year. And of course, a large part of this non-assessment revenue is recreationally. See, this is about two-thirds of all of our non-assessment revenue is recreational. And just some general considerations you want to think about as you're going through the budgeting process. Should, should revenue growth be targeted, you know, or not? Some like to do that, some don't. Should there be an assessment ceiling set or not? That may be a discussion. Any new programs or initiatives that need to come into play? And we have a bunch of fee schedules, obviously, for all of our activities that are in non-assessment, and they ought to be reviewed on an annual basis. Next, Mike. So expenses, we're a service organization. Okay, 70% of all of the expenses are salaries, benefits, and outside services. In fact, 80% of all our people costs are full-time employees. So it's really important that we pay attention to the people in the organization. There's another 17% that, you know, we've, we've been calling administrative costs. You know, things that really aren't controlled by the day-to-day activities that the folks are responsible for. You know, the rent, the insurance, those two categories alone are over 10% of our annual budget. Hampers us a bit when we're trying to spend the money in a, in a, in a better way, but unfortunately, those are pretty important items. So again, some things to consider when you look at expenses. You know, it's people oriented. Okay, any changes that need to be made in positions? Do we need more? Do we need less? Any opportunities for outsourcing or insourcing third-party activities? A few years ago, we in-sourced some illegal activities. Okay, so it is something that we do look at and ought to each and every budget. And then are there productivity gains we can make? Because obviously, if there's ways that we can be more efficient or more productive, that's money freed up to spend on things like hopefully capital projects, which will be my next slide, Mike. And this is the, I know this is the part that Scott wishes he was here for the most. It's one of his key items that he's concerned about, and that's capital. And you know, if you take a quick look at the chart, the chart is simply a, the amount that we budgeted, not we spent, but budgeted over the last, whatever number of years that is. We've doubled the kind of capital we need to manage the organization just in a few years. So basically, though, capital, two main categories. We have triple RF, which is for all of the existing capital assets for their upkeep. That's, that's certainly the largest number every year. We, we're in the vicinity of $3 to $4 million a year in, in, in funding those. We have a resolution that requires us to fund them. And that's based on an annual average forecasted cost over the next 10 years. And of course, as anything, though, the board, you know, can adjust that, but it takes two-thirds vote to adjust anything we do with triple RF. CARF is something that, you know, it's first of all, it's new assets, brand new. Okay. And there's no formal funding requirement. Okay, there's, there's nothing said in resolution. Some years, there may be no new assets, others, it's substantial. In fact, in the chart on the right, 2022 and 23, there's somewhere around $700,000 of CARF funds in there. There weren't that many funds for CARF in the 10 years prior to that in total. So it's, it's really, and I wouldn't be surprised if it gets bigger as we go forward. So an important item to keep, keep an eye on is CARF. The current approved projects this year that Chris and his team are working on, it totals about $6.5 million between triple RF and CARF projects. And just, you know, some things you want to think about as you're doing a budget. Obviously, what's the latest 10-year average for triple RF? Very important number. You know, should we look at previously approved projects if they've been kind of sitting idle for a few years? All except Hunter Woods Ball Field, that needs to be done ASAP. We all know that. And then CARF, we have to pay a particular attention to CARF and how we can fund those positions. Mike, next. So cash, this is kind of, you know, we don't typically, we don't budget cash. Okay, you know, you budget revenue, expense, and capital. And in theory, revenue minus expense minus capital equals zero. But of course, you know, the world doesn't quite work that way. Okay. The good news is RA is in a very strong cash position. In, 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 in some cases, like triple RF, there's a minimum cash position required by resolution. Right now, there's currently no minimum requirement for operating cash, but you know, operating cash is at an all-time high. So you know, it's not like we're pushing too hard on that at this point. But the, you know, cash being not really a budget item, you know, the real question becomes, you know, when or how should cash play a part in the budgeting process? And as new amenities arise and CARF funds become a bigger factor, what do we do to ensure that a solid funding process for new acquisitions is in place? So important thing to think about, and it may affect cash. So Mike, next. That leaves us with the assessment. Like I say, revenue minus expense minus capital plus or minus cash equals zero. You know, we're a nonprofit. Most years, you know, cash isn't a factor. Okay, but in '22, you know, because of increased operating expenses, you know, I mean, yeah, there were some salary increases that were, that were important to take place, but also things like insurance, a lot of some capital expenses that needed to be done. And if we had left the assessment the way it fell out, it would have been $816, a 13% increase. So last November, the board elected to utilize the favorable cash position and about $1.6 million and keep the fee at $740, a 3% growth. Not an easy discussion to have, but you know, I'm sure, you know, every year, there's going to be that type of discussion with the kinds of things that we know we've got to take care of. And just so people are aware, the 2023 assessment is currently budgeted at 815, a 10% increase over the current 22, a number of 740. So while cash was helpful in '22, you know, it certainly isn't a sustainable way to manage assessments into the future. So it's, it's nice to have cash, but we also have to find ways, whether, you know, it's around revenue, it's around, you know, expense management or whatever, on how to make sure that we properly fund everything that needs to get done. And some of the things to consider, you know, with with the assessment, number of membership households out there, that can change on an annual basis. It isn't necessarily large, but it certainly is a major factor when we do add some members. You know, will more, you know, two questions that have been on the table now for several years. Okay. You know, will more and better amenities drive more non-assessment revenue? You know, what member, what are members looking for in improved amenities? A lot of people working on those things. Okay, because they're going to be very important to making sure that we've got a solid funding process. And then another, another topic that's been brought up by board members, it's been brought up by, you know, members of the, in the community. Okay. You know, should borrowing funds be an alternative to improve capital assets and defer costs? All of these things are things that we want to be thinking about over the course of a budgeting season. So that's what I wanted to share. If anyone's got any questions, be happy to try to answer, but you know, if you need detail, I know that Larry and Bob are probably going to have a lot more detail in their upcoming discussions.
Is everyone happy with that they, that they completely understand the budget process, at least at a fundamental level? It turns out to be an annual, as, as Davis said, it turns out to be an annual process irrespective of the attempts to, to look forward one year. It's been suggested by other people who are much more, much more conversant in, in nonprofit planning than I am, that suggest even a five-year budget, a budget plan would be the way to go, particularly in an organization such as our own, where we are going to be spending material amounts of money on renovating infrastructure. But all those are based on the very salient questions that David's posed, like what do people want? And those, that's what we are going to attempt to do during this budget cycle, get to what, what do people want? And with the, the target date of November, the November board. So assuming that there aren't any, any questions from any of the members, staff, or my fellow directors, let's shift it over to our acting CEO, Larry, Larry Butler.
And Dave Kerr, thank you so much for putting that in, in very easy to understand terms. I feel like I've been studying the RA budget process, I don't know, for almost a decade now, and that was the, the simplest and easiest to understand process that, that I've come across. You did a great job and pinch hitting for Scott, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I don't know if Christina or Mike wants to do my slides. Alrighty, thank you. So Dave, I also want to give you kudos. That was a very crisp presentation. And one that should be required reading for all the members, however, we get it out to them. So what I want to do is run through just a very small number of slides. When, when we had this date calendared, I went to the senior leadership team and I said, look, you know, this is a really early budget meeting. We're going to have many iterations. And what I asked them to do is give me your highest priorities for those things that are currently not in the 2023 draft, which Bob just, you know, he explained, it's basically an extrapolation of 3% roughly on the 2022 approved budget. We know there's going to be a lot of back and forth, a lot of discussion, a lot of priorities set and so forth through that. But what I asked the staff to do was give me the things that are most important from, on a member-facing basis, those things that impact the direct service we give to the membership and that we frankly hear about. Not always in a good way, but what we hear about with respect to the operations that we provide and so forth. So I'm just want to walk through those. I think there's an, there's not a priority here. It's alphabetical order if I did my alphabet soup correctly. So let's start with the next slide. So the first one out of the gate is communications. And I know you all, as board members, have heard it, you have experienced it. We had the website funded, was it 2020 perhaps? I can't remember the exact year. But I, as your acting CEO, think we need a new website and we need one badly. The current one is just a placeholder for information. It provides no, no back and forth. There's no customer relationship management function with it whatsoever. So I know this is on the, you know, the IT committee's radar, but I do think this is a really high priority for the association and how we communicate with our members and get relevant information out on a timely basis. So that's communications.
Hey, Larry.
Yeah.
We, we have a big chunk of that already sitting in capital, right? Or did we defund that?
I think we, I think we just, Chris, Chris is on the call.
Yes. So that project last year was defunded and put back into the triple RF, unencumbered funding until then reallocated. It is currently in a working draft that I have for next year's budget.
Okay, just wanted to see if we were going to take the whole cost on it as part. Thank you.
Good question, though, Jennifer. Next one, covenants administration. The only request I got from CAM is they do not have a dedicated administrative person, and this is somebody to write letters, work on flip books, you know, do frankly, do all the administrative tasks that right now, the advisors, the DRB managers, everybody's taken a piece of that, so they don't have a go-to administrative person. Parks and Rec has Sandy Bears, for those of you who have met her, you know, as an example. And so this was the single request from covenants for your consideration for 2023. And this directly goes to the membership in, in the respect that the advisors are taking time to do, you know, the admin piece. They can't, you know, say, hey, could you please, you know, get this letter out and so forth, when they could be actually working with the members, or actually even going out on site. So again, this is the single ask from covenants. Financial services, based upon where we're at thus far in 2022, Tom recommends that we increase the, this is, this is an add-on, this is an increase in the credit card fees of about $30,000 for 2023. And I know that may become a discussion that the board has later, later this summer or fall. But that, we see that trending in that direction as more people interact with the association for purchasing and so forth with credit cards. And, and frankly, more people are getting more comfortable with Member Suite as well. Next slide, please, Mike. HR and admin, this is, you know, this is pretty, pretty small potatoes. What we have found is that because of the difficult job market, we are spending a little more on advertising. And I'm not talking about, you know, major searches, but just our regular efforts to recruit staff as well as all staff training. And then also, we think we could do a better job with employee recognition, you know, for years of service and things like that. So that's a pretty simple, simple ask right there, and it is people-related. Information technology, I'll just duplicate what I said under communications, which is the new website. You saw that in the IT maturity assessment. Again, the IT committee has already touched upon it. I know my director, Small, has gotten a lot of the backup information that was done the last go-round when we were working with the vendor Civics Plus. The second piece of that that we think is really important is moving our phone system to the cloud. And you can see with the cost for that, right now, we have a, an old system that is not cloud-based and is actually approaching its end of life for service by the vendor. And if you need details on that, I think Tom can answer those. I don't know all the very specifics behind it, but that is a highly recommended maneuver that we do. I got no requests for maintenance and environmental resources. You know, Mike, Mike and his staff over there, they seem pretty, pretty happy. And they believe they've got what they need to, to carry on and move forward in 2023. Next slide, please. Recreation and environmental education. So first, we'll talk about aquatics. As you all may recall, or some of you recall, we talked about a step for lifeguard pay to help recruit and retain lifeguards. And I will say that the first step that we did, that was implemented in 2022, has been pretty successful. We were able to, I think we've got, you'll see this in my CEO update, I think it's 373 guards that have been, you know, come through the system. So this is for your consideration to, you know, do the second step to make us, you know, make us competitive and remain competitive in the marketplace for lifeguards. And I know there was an article recently, I don't know if it was USA Today or somewhere, where across the, the country, their difficulty with a lot of places, municipalities included, opening pools because they can't find lifeguards. So again, this is a direct, you know, service to our membership to keep the pools open and, and also to maintain the hours that we have this year. So that's the second half of that first sentence. We also want to replace two ADA lifts. We know there's an increase in chemical costs, that's direct inflationary. And then also just an increase in sort of that day-to-day repair and maintenance. This is not the stuff that Chris does, the major capital repairs. This is, these are things that don't eclipse that $5,000 mark, and they're, and they're just, you know, regular maintenance activities. What we're finding is that we're, we're hitting the, hitting that number and beyond every year. And so we think it's prudent to, to budget for that. And then furniture replacement, which is an easy thing to just toss out. And talking to Laura, we think we can do a nice phasing plan with this, do a, you know, two or three-year phasing plan. And then tennis and pickleball, bench and ball machinery is pretty straightforward. And then similarly, increase the facility repair and replacement. It's like crack repairs and so forth, sort of those interim things before Chris gets a hold of a facility and, you know, tears it up and replaces it. But there's a lot of that. That's a, you know, that's a 20-year, 25-year replacement cycle. So there's a lot of maintenance, you know, it has to happen in the interim to keep them playable at the level that our members expect. And then this last one here, under P and R admin, this is the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee initiative to do a facility survey. That RFP, which is not a commitment, and it's explained in what we're sending out, that working very closely with Jane Braun from Prac, is to get numbers, and we should hope to have those in maybe six weeks, that we can then, you know, get in front of you for your consideration going into 2023. Recognizing the engagement doesn't start until 2023 as well. Next slide. And then these are just cross-departmental considerations, and, and this is kind of like what, what Dave Kerr was talking about, except for the first one. You heard me last year talking about a registrar, and I know that was something that Parks and Rec staff was, you know, really excited about. You may also recall that we had initially, in the IT budget that Clara had put forward, had two additional staff in there. had two additional staff in there. Database manager and some other position. What I, what I'm recommending here is really a hybrid of those things. Tom and Dave spend a fair amount of time digging into the, the, you know, sort of the background of member suite to help members. And, you know, Dan Marinick, Catherine Cap, Capery and others in Parks and Rec dig a lot into the background with RecTrack. And it's all to deal with members' questions about those various, you know, about their accounts, about the various, you know, pieces and so forth. And so this is really a combination of you, you, two, maybe even three positions. And, you know, if we're successful, if the board would approve this, we get somebody that their sole focus is to dig into the background for these member facing applications to help resolve issues that come up all the time. And a lot of times that's just education. The people, you know, who may not be familiar with, you know, registering online or those kinds of things. But, you know, I'm sure Tom can speak to this too. There are a ton of questions and, and a lot of times they're simple, but they take time to respond to those. And, and to be responsive, we want to get back to those people as quickly as possible. So that's what this is about. So that's one of the two positions that, that you see in these, in this slide deck. The next one, inflation. I know the fiscal committee is going to discuss this. Lisa from that committee put forward some suggestions. And I just want to, you know, put it out there for you all to think about whether you are attending the fiscal committees or not, or what you read in the papers. But, you know, inflation is all over the place. You, you may remember that Chris had, I think, 2.76% or something in his, you know, former, you know, sort of CIP, if you will, with respect to our fixed assets and, and things like that. We know that's low. So should that be 4%, should be four and a half? And other, you know, other things, just labor, goods, services. So again, I just put it out here because it's an important piece. Because just looking at, you know, 3% on the 2022 budget, that's a big number in and of itself. So just put it out there. Insurance, we are actively working on that. I probably had 25 emails about that today. That's going to be reviewed at the fiscal committee meeting next Wednesday. The, the biz that we get in, and I'm working directly with Tom Atkins from Albert Risk on that. In fact, I have a call with him tomorrow morning. So we're not sure where that's going to land. We hope it's less than we'll pay this year, but that's yet to be determined, but it will be determined soon. And so we'll have that number that we could then put in, you know, the initial draft of the 2023 budget. And I think that's my last slide.
Larry, when do we think we'll have insurance? Did you have a date?
Well, we have to have it by July 1st. So it will be at the, it'll be at the June board meeting as a contractual matter.
Would we get, so would be in our draft board package on the 13th, or are you thinking it's going to be?
Well, no, it will not be the 13th because the fiscal meeting is next Wednesday. And, and for those of you who have been involved with insurance in the past, it usually comes down to the wire when getting the numbers because insurance companies are very reluctant to put out a quote. And they, and they don't guarantee anything over 30 days, which is why the fiscal committee is meeting in June to discuss it. We were originally going to discuss it Monday night, but we've given the bidders a couple more days because there are two of them are having difficulty finding quotes on, for instance, dams. So it's the reality of the, of the marketplace with insurance right now.
Can you put what you've got in the draft board packet and then we get the other two later? Or does it have to be one?
Frankly, because of the discussions that are going to go on tomorrow, probably Friday, Monday and Tuesday. And then also after the fiscal committee meeting, I'm reluctant to put anything in the board packet. Until the, until the final packet goes out Thursday or Friday after the fiscal committee meeting.
Um, Larry, on the IT phone system piece, is part of that a one time implementation number versus part of it being an ongoing number?
There is a, there is an annual fee to that. And I believe the annual fee is in that 50 for the first year.
Okay, so, so part, part would be capital for this year and then part would be expense going forward after that.
Correct. And I believe Michael is bringing this to the IT committee next week for an initial review.
Perfect. And then the two ADA lifts, it, do we know if that, I'm assuming that would be capital?
I don't know the cost of those.
I don't believe they meet the threshold.
Okay.
Yeah.
So those would be expense items. Same thing with the furniture, I'm assuming they would be expense items.
Right. It's, yeah, because an individual chair is, you know, 120 bucks. I haven't bought lawn furniture in a long time.
Okay. And my, my last question is, did staff come up with any ideas on cost savings or efficiencies or things that we need to stop doing or?
I know Laura and her staff, let me answer the last part first. I know Laura and her staff are looking at, you know, what are some of the things that they've done in the past that they should stop doing? One of the difficulties that you're coming out of two years of pandemic related programming is really tough to gauge what would remain successful. That was, say, successful in 2019, when you had two COVID years where people were reluctant to, to do certain things. With respect to efficiencies, I know that, that word comes up all the time. That, that's a, that's a tough thing to. I, I will tell you, our staff is basically cheap, okay? We are always looking to do things the least expensive way. And I know that, that sounds like fluff, but it, it's true. I mean, they know how particular, you know, this board and passports have been about the bottom line. And, you know, I'm happy to go to them and say, you know, identify X, Y and Z. And see, and see what they come up with. But it's a, yeah, I mean, I, I will ask them. I'm not sure how you want it framed.
Or even like a dream project, like are there things that, you know, they've had in their head for last couple of years? Like I, I think that the board would love to hear.
I think Jennifer, Bob, we had those, those three scenarios we wanted staff to come back to. I think that's what.
Okay, I thought Larry was presenting that now. So is that, we're going to do that in the future?
Right, yeah, we're, yeah, the, the, the dreamers, the dreamers on my staff are very, very busy right now trying to get their, their summer programs kicked off. So they, they do, they, Laura said she has 16 pages of ideas.
Nice. And this, the scenarios, at least how I envision, and I think we shared with Bob as well, is have three options. So get staff to think along those lines of, here is what we've been doing, or here is what if you gave me 500,000, here's what I can give you. Or here's, you know, let's not be Pennywise, sound foolish. But I'll leave it to Bob. When you get to that slide, we can talk about it. I don't want to jump the order.
That's all right. I think it's, whether we discuss it later or now, it's, it should be discussed. I think that's a, that's a great idea. I think we need to, we need more information. I'm reluctant to set dollar goals and say, well, what can you do for 500,000 or a million dollars? That's, I think that's a mistake myself.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear any counterpoints that other board members or members have about, about that. Because I can, I'm, I'm certain we could, we could spend the money.
Correct.
And it seems like we have, it seems, as Dave pointed out, we are at an all time, at, we are at an all time high cash position right now. But that money really isn't just there. It's there for a purpose. The purpose is we have to look forward because we have aging infrastructure that is increasingly more expensive to renovate or repair than ever before. And go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, one of the reasons, and I'm, I'm going to give the staff some credit here. One of the reasons we have that cash position, because as Dave Kurt knows very well, having served on the fiscal committee for a long time, and you as well, Bob, since you dig into the numbers, is we do a very, very good job managing to our budget, particularly on the operating side. And, you know, when there's deviations that are required, you know, whether it's an amendment or whatever, we bring those to the board. But our staff manages to their budgets very, very well. Chris is not any discredit to you. The difficulty we have with the cash flow comes from all the unknowns with the big projects. You all know that Lakefront is a perfect example. But on the operating side, we do a very good job managing to our budgets. And I think that's part of the reason we have a very good cash balance. So I would like the staff to get some credit for that.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. There's no question that that is, that is the case. But I, I, being a fiscal conservative, the money there is virtually spoken for. Maybe not today, or maybe not in the next three or four years, but it will be used. It is not something that, you know, unlike a typical business where they, where they have excess cash and they decide to distribute it to shareholders. This, we operate, as Dave said, so that at the end of the day, everything comes back to zero. So if there, are there any other questions that anybody has or any other ideas or suggestions that they want to bring forward? Speak to Larry about issues that they, that are questions that they want to raise?
I'll let others go first, but if not, Larry, I don't, do you need it as a board motion from us, the three scenarios? I'm happy to, if not. And again, it's optional, we can put it out. Maybe some decide to do all three, some decide to do one or two. We'll take what we can get.
No, 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 we don't need a board motion. I, I can have them do that. I mean, the, to, to use the term, it's in the, I think in Bob's presentation, the fantasy. I, I did, what I need to do is say, you need to really focus on scenario one and two. And don't get carried away on scenario three because, you know, they are, and I'm speaking particularly of Laura's staff, you know, they got lots of ideas on how to do some really cool things. So I just got to kind of rein them in and say, spend a little more time on one and two, please.
Correct.
So the first one I think was, would improve, I don't have your slide in front of me, Bob. If, what if we have effectiveness and efficiencies on their current budget?
Right. But those, those are, those are things that you need to, to sit down and really formulate. You know, it's easy to talk about efficiencies, efficiencies. That's more of a, a budgetary number. Effectiveness is, is much more a thoughtful approach on what should we be doing as opposed to how do we spend the money? And staff does, has done a great job of being efficient. They stay within the budget year after year. So let's, let's step forward and, and go and, and speak about the, the process that we're going to follow.
And not a good example, I think, Larry, is the one that you brought up where, you know, you've, you've melded two, two requests together and said, maybe we can have two teams share a resource. Things like that, you know, even if the senior leadership team gets together and says, hey, what, you know, what are you doing over there? What can we do together? You know, are there systems that we can put together or there, you know, duties from, from one team to another, like the one that you kind of presented? Anything like that even would be helpful.
And I would love to hear from Larry as well, Larry, overall. As RA as a whole, you give us three scenarios how you would like RA to go to.
I haven't had time to think about it yet. But believe me, I can come up with some stuff.
Okay. The last part of this evening's presentations is to talk about the, the process. So what's the work plan? What's the timeline? And who, who's going to do the work? So in setting the 23, the 23 budget, we have a primary objective this evening is to set the timeline so that staff and the board provide the membership with a sound budget that can be approved in November. Our secondary objective tonight is to provide an overview of the association's revenues and expenses with a primary focus on our people costs. As Dave pointed out, about 80%, 70% of our expenses relate to people costs. From a functional perspective, people costs are the largest element of operating expenses. You know, I'll be redundant and say that, you know, for the fifth or sixth time this evening. We are a service organization that needs to ensure that we have the personnel necessary to produce and manage the services and programs that our members value. Therefore, we rely on staff to maintain the safe and sound operation of our amenities. And we need a competent staff that is fairly compensated. So the process for the 23 plan, the timeline, the broad timeline was approved by the board at its March 2022, 2022 meeting. What we're going to present tonight are establishing the responsibilities for the action steps to be taken. And secondly, setting the timeline for those actions to be completed. And lastly, to establish a repository of documents supporting the discussions and analysis, analysis that we've completed. So we're going to get a little bit into the weeds. In the month of June, there are four key dates. One has already passed, but was extended. We extended the, the period for members to provide input on budget suggestions to the 16th. The second item is what we're doing tonight. We're talking, we're having the kickoff meeting. We've, we've worked through most of the steps here and we're discussing next steps and establishing responsibilities. The third will be the June 23 regular board meeting, at which time we will summarize the results of the, of a Survey Monkey survey. We will evaluate the submissions and ideas to determine which should move forward to fiscal and staff for inclusion or consideration in the budget. And lastly, at the June 29th, Prac meeting, Prac is going to do, provide a deliverable at that, at, at that meeting for recommendations, their recommendations for the 2023 capital triple RF budget as well as the CARF budget. In the month of July, we have three key dates, they're pretty well clustered towards the end of the month. On the 20th, fiscal will, will discuss with staff and the CEO our challenge scenarios. The staff is going to provide us with an analysis on the board selections that fiscal and all the relevant, all of the relevant community committees will, will have for their review and comments. And as well as Prac's macro rendations for capital projects for 2023. On the 27th of July, Prac will have its monthly meeting. And it is expected to provide a deliverable by August 8th, in which it'll evaluate the board's list of possible new budget items and provide recommendations to the board that should be moved forward to the 2023 budget. And lastly, in July, we have the regular board meeting where the board will vote on initial thoughts on capital projects for the coming, coming year. July is seemingly a light month, but a very important date is August 17th, where there will be a joint meeting of fiscal and the board. It's going to be in, in person. It's going to be in, in person and we will encourage the public to participate. Um, we will review and discuss, uh, the challenge scenarios again, giving clear guidance to staff, uh, on budget ideas and whether we're going to move items forward, uh, to the first draft of the budget. September, um, the reason we have two dates here is that we will, depending upon when the first draft of the budget is available, fiscal will review that at its meeting, whether that be on the 14th or the 21st. And they will send their recommendations forward through the, uh, Board Operations Committee for consideration at the September 22nd regular board meeting.
Bob, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
With it. So when we're talking about capital, I just want to go back to Dave's presentation where he had, do we have money sitting in previously approved capital projects? Is there a report somewhere? Do we know how much or how many projects are out there?
Yes. Uh, Chris prepares, has been preparing a quarterly report on, uh, the status of all approved projects. Whether, whether they, uh, have been put out for bid, whether they're in process, um, uh, or whether they've been completed during the month. So you have a very comprehensive view of what has been done, what is being done. And as well as what, or for whatever reason, whether it be, um, uh, lack of materials or a, a change in prioritization of projects where they are deferred either later in the year or into a subsequent year.
So just the deferred piece, can we have fiscal look at that as well? When, before they come to us, like just those that have been deferred for a while? Do we revisit them?
We, we do look at all of them. We do look at all of them.
Thank you.
Uh, in September, we're going to, on the 19th, fiscal will review the second draft of the budget and make any additional recommendations. We will also discuss cash position, which we have, we've done towards the end of the year to make sure that there are adequate funds to meet the obligations that we have as we spend the assessments that we received early in the year, throughout the year, to make sure we have enough money to cover all operations as well as the, the expended, uh, budget, um, costs that have been incurred in the final quarter, fourth quarter of the year. On the 27th, the board will review the second draft of the, of the budget. And we will vote on cash position for year end and review the fee schedule. And we'll speak more about the, the fee schedule in, we'll challenge that in a, in a bit, because there are a whole laundry list of fees that we charge. And one of the, the challenges that we may wish to look at is whether those fees are appropriate or not. Should they be changed, um, given current conditions? And, um, as we go forward to make sure that we're being adequately compensated for the services that we're providing. The, the final month, uh, of the budget for this, this coming year will be a decision, will be a, a review by the fiscal committee either on November 14th or the 16th. Uh, at which time, uh, the, the fiscal committee will review the final draft and send any absolute or final, its final edits to the, to the board for, uh, its consideration. And on the 17th of November, uh, staff and fiscal will review the final, final budget and uh, we should arrive at an approved budget on, at that time, so that we can set the assessment for the coming year as well as the fees that we're going to charge in 2023. So that is the timeline. Um, what we've added, uh, with this particular, uh, schedule is, uh, in the, in the third column is the responsibility and then, uh, to whom we are going to report out the, the, uh, the items. So, um, what I'd next like to do is discuss very briefly, um, a overview of recent budgets. Um, for those of you who, uh, who don't follow the, the numbers, uh, uh, regularly, there are nine departments within RA. Um, the ones that we're going to focus on tonight are recreational services and maintenance, since they collectively involve the greatest number of our staff and generate the largest amount of non-deductible revenues to RA. I'm not going to spend a great deal of time, um, on this, but these are the high level numbers that staff has provided us, which look at actuals for the last three years and current year's budget as well as the targeted budget for 2023, the one that was approved last year. And as Larry mentioned, it was largely a three percent increase over the 2022 budget. So this is a combined, um, revenue and expense report for the entire organization for those five periods. The next slide is the people costs. Uh, we asked staff to go back and look at, uh, our people costs for those same five periods. And as you can see, it's, it's increased in each year, but it's beginning to slow, um, in between 2022 and 2023. And the total number of regular full-time people has increased by an approved level of eight. And that does not consider the vacant positions, uh, that currently exist in the 2022 budget, obviously. Um, the most obvious one is, uh, we're, we are looking for a permanent new CEO, um, an IT director or, and, and an environmental, uh, director.
Um, can, can somebody mention, what is the assumption for 2023? What, what, is there an assumption built into 2023 for labor increase costs already or not?
We just.
Go ahead, Larry.
I was just going to say, um, and Tom can, maybe Tom can best address this, but I think pretty much what we did is said three percent across the board. We did not make any, you know, back when we put this together in November, we didn't say, you know, we had no idea that inflation was going to go crazy in the first four or five months of the year. So yeah, none of that's built in.
But something, something was built in.
Three percent.
Yeah, okay. And, um, does this slide also account for the conservative factor? Or?
It does have attrition.
It's, it is built in. Okay.
It does account for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Um, as you said, we're going to focus on, uh, recreational services and programs. Um, as you can see here, uh, uh, the 2023 budget was not broken out for, or people specifically, but there is, uh, there was a, a major increase in, uh, between 2021 and 22, actual versus budget. Uh, yeah, of about 10%. And that has, uh, has decreased to about 3% with no increase in the overall, um, number of full-time or regular part-time people that work in those programs. But as you saw on the previous slide, we do have, as Larry mentioned, uh, early in the presentation, 373 lifeguards, which are not in this number, uh, explicitly in terms of headcount, but they are built in to the costs, uh, of the program, of the, of running the programs. And to the right, you can see a breakdown of the revenues and expenses, uh, for, uh, the recreation programs and services that we provide across these seven different component pieces. And of those, we recover in terms of total operating costs, about half of our operating costs. And having had a discussion with, uh, one of the areas, uh, directors of parks and recreations, um, they, they thought that was an excellent return. They are recovering only thirty to thirty to forty percent of their costs, direct costs in terms of producing, uh, recreational services and programs. The other major component, uh, that we were, that I'm going to focus on and very briefly are, is the central services. This is, these are the folks that cut the grass and keep Reston looking very, very, very neat, take care of the, the trails, um, cut down the dead trees, remove the trees that have fallen, uh, on, on our paths and generally keep Reston, uh, very serviceable for our members. And again, uh, from a, a headcount perspective, that has stayed very stable for the past five periods. And as, uh, as Larry indicated, they are not looking for any major increases. So, um, what we are, what we are going to, we're going to experience a, a relatively stable situation with central services, uh, going into, into next year. And then I'm going to basically skip over the remaining, um, information for the other departments at RA for sake of, of time, because they're, they, uh, really are, for the most part, with the exception of covenants, at overhead, and overhead meaning that they are operations that you have to have in order to conduct the business at all. And they're not expected to generate, uh, commensurate revenue. I'd like to also talk very briefly about background information to provide some context about inflation impacting personnel goods and services needed to operate RA. Um, I, I used to be an analyst, so I, I like graphs. And this first, first slide shows the Consumer Price Index. Um, the maroon line is for the Washington Metropolitan MSA. And the, the dotted line is Baltimore MSA. And you can see that, um, Washington had, at least in, in the current environment, has not seen the changes because we have had relatively stable employment. And even though prices have gone up, um, things have stabilized a little bit better than in Baltimore. The next, the next slide, and I focused here on, uh, we mentioned, we talk about the Consumer Price Index that's bandied about, just about every day that it's going up. But as you can see from, from here, uh, this, this slide, major expectation, uh, is around energy costs. And I, and I parsed out gasoline, uh, and you can see that it has had an enormous impact um, on, on inflation and is expected to, uh, increase even more over the next 12 months. Uh, at the time I put this slide together, gasoline, one year out, was trading at 414 a gallon. And they expected that it would trade at 458 a gallon 12 months forward. Uh, and just as a point of comparison, uh, one year back in 20, at the end of May in 2021, gasoline was less, it was just about half of what it, what it was at the end of May this year. Credit cards, um, the reason I bring this up is because, uh, this slide points out that consumers are opening up a record number of new credit cards. And this is going, this could have pressure on the, the number of our members that use credit cards to pay their assessments and pay their other fees. And, uh, since we are going to talk about, uh, at fiscal and bring forward to the board a recommendation on how we should deal with credit card fees, um, I wanted to at least bring up the point, two points. Number one, the number of credit cards are increasing. The balances of credit cards are increasing and the cost of credit is increasing. So bottom line, there is a, a, an uptick in borrowers with lower credit scores that are beginning to fall behind in payments. So very important things as we, as we move forward and we anticipate using, um, cred, or taking advantage of credits to, uh, cover assessments. Not going to spend any time talking about the general market. It's just crazy. It's laughable. It goes up and down. Um, jobs report has been very, very stable. Um, in April, uh, job openings fell by 455,000. Um, but still there are twice as many jobs as there are people applying for them. And that had not changed at the, at the end of, at the end of May at all, or not appreciably. So I'd like to finish up, uh, very briefly and not spend a great deal of time on this. This is from the 2022, um, Reston, Reston Climate Change Report that the EAC provided to BAC earlier this week. And what I, the, the blue stars represent areas that might have, uh, budget implications if Reston Association were to adopt these programs. So managing, uh, managing areas to, for erosion, um, we do that now, but if we increase that, that would have a budgeting implication. Uh, reducing mowing frequency. And they suggested a no mow, mo, a no mow, moo month of May. Um, it's certainly, uh, if we reduce the use of internal combustion engines uh, and shifted to an electric fleet or some alternative fuel fleet over time, that would certainly have big implications for, uh, the budget. The second page, uh, again, are other ideas, uh, encouraging construction of living roofs, uh, roofs that are lightly colored, uh, as would be particularly important as we begin the process of renovating our, our pools, uh, whether we could make them more, um, environmentally sound. Uh, establishing a phase out of the gas-powered fleet, which we've looked into, um, previously, and we'll look into again. Shifting on, um, late last week, Rafa, uh, investment advisors who manage, um, our investments, uh, had a session on, uh, managing operations in inflationary times. And they talked about impacts, impacts being increases in payroll and benefit costs. Higher rents, but our rent is locked in. We, we negotiated, uh, a lease for the, the facilities that we rent. Increases in vendor costs, these are obvious things, but, uh, the dimensions or the, the amount of change is, uh, is something that we have to be aware of and plan for. is something that we have to be aware of and plan for. They suggest looking at new sources of revenue, ways to reduce expenses. An interesting one, which we, which we may look at at fiscal in, in a future time, is potentially downsizing the office space as we move to hybrid work schedule. I know Laura has already done this with chlorine, is buying, buying chlorine in bulk in order to save money. And then the last one, which has implications for our investment portfolio, is moving dollars among reserve fund portfolios into different, different allocations in order to maximize or optimize returns. And then lastly, questions to be considered, and many of these were brought up during other presentations, but I'll, I'll repeat them very quickly. Since people represent such a large portion of our budget, what are the anticipated cost detail for the next year? What's coming and sunsetting? In other words, which do we, are we projecting new programs? What new programs are we projecting for next year? And are we retiring any programs? The issue of efficiencies, what efficiencies can be achieved in 2023? What ideas could we have for improving efficiencies that would impact the budget? Have our facility improvement plans changed from when the budget was developed? And this will discuss, we discuss on an ongoing basis with capital, the capital administration folks, specifically Chris Shoemaker. Next, have the various fee assumptions changed or need to be changed going into 2023? And we're, we're not just talking about the assessment, but we're talking about the range of assessments for the services that we charge our members and non-members. And lastly, how do we incorporate? How do we ensure that we incorporate member committee, board, and staff ideas into the budget process? Does anybody have any questions or comments? The idea tonight was to introduce this to kind of propose not only a way forward, but to challenge all of us to think about how we do things going forward.
I have to interrupt. We've lost Quorum because Glenn has left the meeting. Tony, can you advise us? Does that mean we have to restand adjourned?
I think we could take a bio break for maybe five minutes, ten minutes, to see if you can come back on.
Okay.
And I'll stop sharing my screen for now.
So let's just take a quick five-minute break, and I'm going to try to reach him to see if he can come back on.
Let me ask my fellow directors that are still on the call whether, whether this was helpful to bring, bring some kind of ideas forward about the budget? Or these, these issues once which you had already thought about and had in mind to bring forward, you know, your suggestions? I think Dave did a great job of talking about the, the budget fundamentals, but he also introduced not only what it is, but how we, how questions and ideas as to how elements of that budget should be considered as we go into the, the coming year.
I think those are great questions, Bob, and maybe we think about them during the bio break and then start up with that when we come back.
Okay.
I thought the presentation as a whole, is both what Dave did and what you have done and what Larry presented, gives an overall view of what we are going to face and how it's going to proceed.
Guys, I, I said that because I, we don't have Quorum, so I, I don't think we're allowed to continue talking or conducting the meeting. I think that's what Tony just advised, is if we can take a break and try to get Quorum back, then we can keep going.
We're not making any decisions and I'm sorry?
Still transacting business technically. Let's avoid the appearance of impropriety.
Well, I'm going to do the take five then.
Please.
And we're back. I think we have direct a small back. Thank you, Glenn, for coming back. I think we're just waiting on Jennifer and you can
Yeah, Laurie, Laurie said that she would also join it to give her a minute, and we're taking that five-minute bio break, so people left their computers for a minute, couple of minutes.
Yeah. Of course, you know, whenever everyone's back, we can get back to business. Thanks, Glenn. Sorry, didn't mean to put pressure on you. Okay, I think all of us are back. It's been about five minutes. We all comfortable?
I'm okay to start.
Hi, Laurie. How's your daughter doing? You're on mute. We can't hear you.
I'm not feeling myself, but I am testing negative and, you know, she's better than she was yesterday, so we'll, fingers crossed.
Of course.
I would hate to miss Friday, but
Yes, yes, fingers crossed, fully. And she's good about quarantining herself, so.
Yes, yes, yes. She's in her own room and, yeah.
Well, Bob, we're back. Your show?
Yeah, well, let me, let me go ask and ask whether people found what we presented as useful and whether it will help the process going forward. And then the second part of that is, what additional information would you like to have as we, as we move towards building the budget?
Sure.
So we can keep, so staff can, staff can help us figure out, figure out the level of detail that the board members would desire. So they're aware of it well in advance.
Erwin, you had some comments before we went on the bio break.
We thought that the presentation was very good, that it gave the overview that all three of you presented, and was helpful in understanding where we are going and how we're going to get there. And I'm, I'm sorry that three of the board members missed it, and the fourth one who is yet to be elected. So it may be well to provide those people with perhaps a quick run-through, or they can read through it. And then if they have any questions, I guess they can come to Bob and raise them.
And the video will also be available on YouTube.
Video will be available as well, so it certainly is well worth your time to listen to the video or watch it.
Jennifer, anything?
I, I definitely think it was a, a good overview. I think that the plan that was mapped out is a good plan. There's, there's lots of things to do between now and when we, we vote on things in November. I think the list Larry gave is a, a heads-up on things that the staff are looking at already is really helpful. I took some notes on three different things from the, the fiscal committee upcoming agendas in addition to what was on the slides, and, and we can make sure that, that they look at, at those items. One of them was the deferred projects for, for capital, which I know Chris, you know, keeps a meticulous list on. Besides fiscal, I was thinking, Erwin, maybe you could have PrAC, you know, look at that, that list too, from a member perspective, if there are projects that are still important to our members, or the PrAC committee thinks, you know, should stay or maybe be retooled into something else in the future. The, 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 the number that we're looking at, just, just with the kind of bare bones 2023 budget for assessments is a little scary. So I think that we're probably going to have a lot of conversations on how, how do we back into that number, as, as we've kind of suggested? Do we look at cash again? But that, that's, you know, we're kind of looking at the 2023 budget as a 10% increase, just with the bare bones budget. And, and that seems like a high increase for one year to, to members. So I, I think that we're going to have our work cut out for us in the next several months to, to get to something that, that everyone can feel comfortable with.
Thank you, Jennifer. I just had one comment, and I know Sean's going to probably be like, Sarah, stop sending videos my way. But Sean, if Dave's presentation and Bob's sort of timeline, if there was a way you could do a three-minute Reston Today version, that would be fantastic for members. I, again, I leave it to you guys as experts, how you want to play that. But I think Dave's presentation will be really useful for lay members to just understand RA finances, and Bob's timeline will be helpful as well. So just.
I mean, I think even if we just cut Dave's piece out in full, I know attention spans are hard, but it was really good information. So even having that by itself out, out in the public.
I think the videos are three minutes, right? Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, are they three-minute videos? The rest of today?
What, what I'd suggest is that we look at doing it, much like we do the informational presentations, where we put a narrative track behind those slides. It, it doesn't really lend itself for video, but I think I know what you mean, Sarah. It's more kind of the movement effect of it, which would be much like we're doing now with the informational presentations. I, I think that would work. We will, unless there's objection, typically, all of these presentations will get uploaded to the website. So Bob's presentation and, and all of the presentations tonight will end up on the website after this meeting.
Do we have any Reston Today videos on our sort of budget process or finances? Have we ever done one?
Not specifically around kind of the budget process. And Sean and I can talk about, is there a way to do that? And talk about it in abbreviated format. Some of like Bob's material would be really detailed to do in a video. But again, I, I think we could look at the presentation slides and see how we can build that out into more of a narrative, educational instructional video.
I think you have Larry wanting to add to that.
Yeah, what I might suggest, again, that, Mike, you make a great point. It's, it's too much detail for a video, but I think what we could do, and maybe this is something our president might want to do as possible suggestion, or the president and the treasurer.
Our treasurer and Dave.
Whomever, but to do one that's a little more one that people might want to watch, you know, a little catchy two-minute thing about, hey, we're getting into budget season, there's lots of opportunities to come to meetings, to listen, go to the website. There's all kinds of stuff. But, I mean, I think that's what you might get out of a video, rather than, you know, nobody's going to look at it if it's got numbers or anything.
Yeah, and then, and then we can use the opportunity to direct them to all these materials that are website if they want to take a deeper dive and understand how the process works.
Perfect. Love it. And you have your on-screen talent right there. Bob and Dave. There we go. Nominated.
Just one quick note on that. There is also the opportunity where we could queue tonight's meeting to exactly those points if, if we wanted to direct people to see their full presentations. So YouTube does allow us to create a link, starting exactly at those presentations.
Perfect. Okay, that'd be fantastic. Thank you, guys.
Um, I have just, I, one question I just thought of, and that's just out of curiosity. We had the original deadline, I think it was Thursday, no, Monday? Was it the third last Friday of, of the member submitter form for the budget? I'm just curious, you know, if anyone's looked at it, are, are we looking at ten requests? I'm just curious, you know, if anyone's looked at it, are, are we looking at 10 requests, a couple hundred requests?
At the last?
Christina probably has the exact number, but if I recall seeing what has come through, I think it's about six.
Oh, it's a small list. Seven. Okay. So smaller.
Am I close, Christina?
Very close. We're up to seven.
And Cam, any movement on you sending it out to the cluster leadership? I know we talked about that and gave them the date of 15. Have you had any interest or anything from that end?
Um, I believe we were trying to confirm if the announcement was going to be sent with your proposed event in July.
Okay. So we haven't sent it out yet.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. So we might need to give them a little more time. Are we okay? Fellow directors, we give them till our June board meeting? Because I feel like we're already close to the eighth. Thank you. Cam, I can talk to you tomorrow and get that out. How did? My only question, this is again personally for me, how did the senior leadership feel about the budget timeline? How comfortable are you? Is there anything we can add, remove, tweak to make it?
Well, I would say that I think it's, I think it's optimistic. And I do appreciate the optimism because I'm frankly an optimist that there's two drafts. You know, it would be great if we could stick to that because I know in pretty much every past year for three decades, it's been I, I can't remember, we, but we've done one in less than no, you know, less than three drafts. So minimum three drafts, sometimes four. Tom knows this very well, having kind of, you know, like four A and four B. So if we can, if we can stick to two, that, that would be great. I think the the budget managers and the department heads would be very happy with that. So we will, we will try to work with you to make that happen. I mean, the, the schedule is what it is, you know, I mean, you know, the difficult part is really for the it's really for Laura and her staff because she has to rely on her, you know, program managers. And from basically now till, you know, late August, they're they're going a hundred miles an hour. So we'll do, we'll, you know, as, as we always do, we'll do the best we can.
Can you all remind us? Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
When we, before we end, I just can, Bob, can you remind us all board members what our homework is? Since we have some things due in June.
Yeah.
I think the, the real homework for the board members is to consider the questions towards the end of the presentation. And think of those within the context of your experience, think of those, those items that you would like added, subtracted, or changed. I know that's, that's a very broad. You know, it's kind of like, it's a very broad statement, but I think each of us has a particular, as a particular expertise at part of the organization that we could look at and provide staff with, you know, ideas that they could react to. You know, like looking for efficiencies, yes, that's a great thing to do. But if we, we could refine that in, in a way that it's actionable as opposed to, you know, aspirational aspirations are, you know, kind of like a dream sheet. And here we want to, if we could identify a couple of things that could be worked on in the coming year of an efficiency, we could identify, you know, handful of things to work on. First of all, it would, it would limit the demands on people's time over the course of a year. It would be achievable. And if we picked the, the things that had the most impact, such as the, the, the proposal that staff made about I, I think it was, as it was brought up originally, just managing member information. If we could, we could make that more efficient, that would be incredibly helpful. If that meant adding a person, so be it. If we could, if we could do it in, in a different way, even better. Those are the kinds of, kind of practical things I, I think about. That we can, that we can either stabilize cost, we can do whatever call it, technical transfers, where you move the responsibility from a person to a process. Those kinds of things to to stabilize or fix costs. And then those are really the areas that I, I think probably have the greatest potential for in making impact on the budget.
And those are due on the 16th from all of us to Christina.
Right. And even if, you know, there, even if you, you've come up with ideas on how, I can think of one thing that only because I've been involved indirectly for a number of, at least the last three years. And that is P and Z, the Planning and Zoning Committee is an offshoot of Reston Association. It was created by Reston Association. And their meetings are conducted at the Northern Governmental Center. Supervisor Alcorn's office. The acoustics in that place and the support for those meetings is, is atrocious. And given the, the number of proposed developments and redevelopments that are ongoing, I think it would be a major, major, major member service. Or RA to, to support the P and Z if it was either location or even and I don't, you know, this, this is going to impact staff, but video streaming, streaming the meetings. Because you know, what, what did one person say? Sunlight is a great disinfectant. There's a lot that goes on in those meetings that you get pushback on that, that wasn't said when, if it were, if it were videoed, you, you'd know what was going on and what was being proposed. And you, and the community could react to it. So they'd be better informed.
If that is the part of RA, is there a way, Larry, we can talk to Walter when we meet him and bring that back in house? Since it's part of our resolution. So then it'll be just like any of our committee meetings. Filmed, live cap. You're on mute. You're on mute.
Yeah. So sorry. I, I hate to Bob, I think actually the Planning and Zoning Committee came out of RCA initially.
Right.
Yeah. So.
But there is, and I bring it up only because I happened to see, as I was going through the resolutions, one of the resolutions is deals with Reston Association will provide a filing cabinet and a space for the meetings.
Right. There, there was a period where P and Z was truly orphaned and they were going through a, shall we say, a rocky time. And so I can't remember if it was Milton or Kate, I, I can't remember the year exactly. Where we said, well, you know, we'll, we'll help you out on a very limited basis. And for whatever reason, the board at, at that time adopted a resolution about it. You know, do we need a resolution to provide support? Eh, probably not. You know, so I, that's one of those things where we, you know, I'd sit down with Mike Leoni and say, okay, what, you know, what is the staff cost to do that support? So that's one of those initiatives that, you know, we just had to say, what, what does it mean? You know, and what does it do?
And Walter has allowed them to use his, the county's WebEx platform to host the online version of those meetings.
That's correct.
And sometimes maybe it's just, you know, they need a place to host that video.
Right. And we, and we, we've had P and Z in our, in our conference room many times. When, when there's a conflict at Walter's office, we always offer it up. So we've had several there. The, I know the most, all the recent meetings have been recorded because they're doing it on WebEx. So, you know, again, if they go back to it, I, I think the difference maker here is, is if and when they go back to in person, that, that changes the dynamic a little bit.
So for now, could it even just be that we take their WebEx recording and share it on our networks?
We could. We could put it up on the landing tab and on the website.
I think it would, it would be because of, we're kind of moving into an area where of development where there's going to be a lot of discussion on Reston Town Center North and how that gets developed. And that's one of the, one of the last big piece parcels of real estate in the TSA to be developed. Number one, and number two, it is that development will be governed by approval of the DRB. The more information that DRB and the membership at large has about the factors of going into that development, the better informed our members are going to be. And I think it would be, you know, the marginal costs would, the incremental costs of providing that kind of a service would would be pale in comparison to the goodwill that we might generate with members.
Right. I mean, even Comstock's coming back and that's kind of the gateway to the metro on the south side. We're just moving back into a period, I think, where we'll see more applications that our members will be interested in. So even, you know, promoting the link on like a social media site after that meeting's recorded, hey, this is out there. I think any of those small, small things would be helpful and help inform our members. So I think Bob's right, like the ideas like that going into the budget process. Even if they don't have a tremendous budget effect. You know, we can even carve them out and, and put them somewhere else. They don't necessarily. So if you think it has a, you know, budget effect, we can put it in and maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, but at least we're bringing them to the forefront for the community.
I think the 16th, the deadline was so we can actually have that conversation, I think, when we get together at the June meeting. And mine, again, just not a budget idea, but I talked to, I think Larry about this before is if there is, when we're looking at efficiencies, look at ways if we can automate internships, part timers. If SLT can look at all of those and give us, hey, if this is a route to go, like, let's think outside the box, be creative. And we talk about internships, not just college kids, but seniors. I'm going back to what's, I can't remember the name of the movie now, but we have a ton of retirees and seniors in our community who would love to spend a few hours with RA.
But I don't, I don't think it's even limited to seniors. There are families where one or the other partner is stays at home to take care of the kids. And as a result, part-time, part-time work is very attractive when the, when the schedule can be, when the schedule can be flexible.
Absolutely. So when they're looking at that three scenarios and the one for efficiency, if they could all kind of explore that, that would be great. Thank you, Tony. The movie is the intern, he says. There we go. We have movie trivia right there. Thank you. Yes. So something fun and creative like that would be great. But otherwise, so fellow directors, please send your suggestions, ideas, thoughts by June 16th. And then we'll discuss it at the June 23rd meeting. And Larry, to your point, hopefully we get all of these discussions and kinks down ahead of time. So we can, when we go into the drafts, you can just be happy with it too. And we already have had that conversation there.
That'd be fun.
As always, it's always fun.
Have anything else?
Uh, I think we've, we've maxed out everybody's absorption rates tonight.
Thank you folks so much. And thank you, Dave. Thank you, Bob, Larry, for putting together. It was great for a start for us to kick off the season. Glenn, thank you so much for coming back. And Lori, sorry, we dragged you out. Hope you feel better.
Yeah, I'll try to get up to speed with viewing those presentations that I missed.
We need you for Friday. So.
Absolutely.
Hydrate, hydrate, hydrate.
Negative test. So if I get, you know, stay, stay good.
Perfect.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you. Perfect. Hearing no objections, we stand adjourned.